Fair work session, if y'all will, listen and follow with prayer. God our heavenly father, thank you for once again allow us to come together on this beautiful day to work with each other to promote the well being of all the citizens of our community. Father God is continue to work together in the spirit of cooperation as we seek solutions that issues faces and the people we represent. Remind us as we deliberate that our power to make decisions come from you first, and then secondly, the people we represent. Father finally be with all the citizens that we move forward together to work to give you the type of community that would fulfill your purpose through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Very much time for the pledge.
I believe we can see the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That of course go role play.
Yes, sir. Mr. Simkins.
Here.
Mr. Ledger. Mr. McElwain.
Here.
Mr. Beatty. Mr. Dawson. Ms. Spicer. Mr. Buckner. Mr. Britt. Mr. Petty. Mr. Williams. Mr. Groh. Ms. Gray.
We do have a quorum. Thank you. Want to thank everybody for showing up tonight. I'm always enthused and regardless of what issues that are important to you to show up and be a part of our community. So you're always welcome here. We look forward to hearing and doing a little work on your issue tonight, but there's going to be other issues that we came have come up in the very near future. We'll be working on budgets here during May and June. There'll be a lot of work on that. We also with the schools. We look forward to working the school board on some borrowing that needs to be done to help get us better, more adequate school buildings. There's a lot of things going on. So you're, we hope that you'll not only come tonight, but you're always welcome and we are on the YouTube channel. If you're sitting in this portion of the audience right here, that camera's very good. So be careful what you write or text. They can see you at home up there. So watch yourselves. I do want to remind everybody, we do try to run this where we get a lot of participation from our commission. But we do run this just like a courtroom with the same level decorum. So again, we appreciate you being part of it, but for everybody that's here and everybody watching at home on TV, we want to make sure we do that. Also remind our commissioners tonight, please use your microphones. They say they can hear me very well, but when they're getting some things at home, they can't hear y'all. So lean in and turn that red button on. First order of business is the approval of the minutes of the January 3rd, 2023 work session. Open floor for motion, motion by Commissioner Butler, second by Commissioner Petty. Any questions for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Next time a business committee reports, is there any committees to report? We'll have something here a little bit later on YouTube. Next is appointments. We have two vacancies on the on the planning commission. One was from the passing of our good friend, Matt Pilkington. And the other was Ms. Beth Garrett. She resigned, couldn't be more time into it. And but we do appreciate their service on this. Names are bringing back before on this is Mr. Todd Lindsay has agreed to serve from the fourth district of the ridge. And then young Mr. Patrick Reagan. I know his daddy pretty well. He's agreed to serve from the 11th district. So I'd like to bring those names forward, have them added to the regular session to be placed on the planning commission. Motion by Commissioner Beatty, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Next item of business is elections. The UT board is an election by the commission. My understanding that the UT board, I believe Ms. Becky Spicer is leaving that board now. That so she has to rotate off and my understanding is that Mr. Mike Petty that's being brought forward, a well-known cattle farmer, a gentleman farmer. So it's good to see him on there. That will be done. This will be moved on to the regular session without objection and held as an election as opposed to appointment. It's a summer deal, but we'll get that done. Commissioner Simkins, you like to add anything to that?
Like petty.
Motion by Commissioner Simkins. I have a second, second by Commissioner Brett. Any questions for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Next time a business is new business, quarterly financial reports, all school funds, Board of Education representative, Dr. Danny Weeks.
Thank you, Mayor Rowland, Commissioners. You should have received an email copy of our quarterly financials. Those were sent and approved by our Board of Education late last week. And so I do bring you a report on that. We're pleased to announce that in terms of revenues, we received fifty-two percent of our revenues. Revenues are coming in very strongly, particularly in the area of county property tax and our sales taxes coming very strongly. As we look through our quarterly reports, we look at this time of year for most all of our funds and subcategories of funds to be in that forty to forty-five percent of their budget. I'm pleased to announce we only had a couple of funds that were over that, but those are in categories and line items where we spend it may be like an insurance premium or something that's paid upfront. And so some of those are paid in advance. Also, our technology department, we're at fifty-nine percent of their total budget to to year to date in there and maintenance is also is a little bit heavy in terms of those funds. But all of our funds are appropriate where they need to be. They have been approved by our Board of Education and I'll be glad to answer any questions should you have those.
Any questions for Dr. Weeks? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to move this on to regular session, motion by Commissioner Beatty, second by Commissioner Petty. Any other questions for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Dr. Weeks, thank you. I do want to point out, since we've got a good crowd here, the sales tax is really working well. I believe though, a lot of y'all are aware of the work that was done by our state legislature and the county marriage association. We'll take a little credit on that to really push to have the internet sales tax done. It's important, sales tax fund schools. So as much as we enjoy going to Cool Springs or Nashville to get something we may not need, we do need to spend as much money as we can in Dixon County. The other portion that's helped is that they use the nine-digit zip code now, which makes the the revenue show up at your address. The split used to be done as a retail store where city of Dixon got ninety percent. And then of course, the city and county, then school portion had to be split evenly. But if you're ordering from home and unincorporated Dixon County, the schools are getting full credit for that and which is helping fund schools. So make sure you keep that Amazon thing on your phone and keep ordering away and use a good old Dixon County zip code. Next time business according financial reports, all funds except schools, Mr. Don Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's the same type thing with us and we don't get much of the line. We don't get the lion's share of the schools gets that local option sales tax, but even though we don't get much of it, it is up also like we're at seventy-one percent for half the year. So it does benefit us that that type thing is is still benefiting. But the property tax prior year collections on property tax is up also. So trustee's office and clerk and master's offices are out there doing their jobs too. You know, getting prior year stuff, but local option in the debt service fund, one fifty-one adequate facilities taxes still. You know, in the codes department, they collect that dollar per square heated foot or square foot heated. That stuff is still coming in really, really good and has for years now. You would think that that would somewhere along the way slow down, but it's still coming in great. I looked through all the funds, the revenue seemed to be good. Hotel motel taxes is eighty-seven percent. I mean, half the year that's that's still, that's still picking up real good. I looked at all the departments, general government and that type thing. Everybody is forty-five, fifty. Seen a couple of them at fifty-two percent. My department was there, so I've got to find out what's going on with that one. But everybody looks in pretty good shape. So I didn't get any emails or any calls with questions about it, but you can call me in the next two weeks if you see anything that you got a question about.
Any question, Mr. Hall at this point? Will entertain a motion to move this on the regular session, motion by Commissioner Simkins, second by Commissioner Ledger. Any questions for discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number three, budget amendments, all funds at sip schools, Mr. Hall.
I sent you out or I sat on your desk today or tonight. Three small funds landfill being the first one, I think I put on your desk. The only thing I did there was a few revenue items, one being sales of property. That's just that just some it might be something like metal where they took it off to the Vanderies or something of that nature. And where we had done a borrowing that I didn't have in here budgeted. So I took and put the note issued one hundred and ninety-five thousand. That's all on the first page from the about the first two thirds of the page. And at the bottom of that front page, a hundred dollars where we missed longevity payment. That's all you're going to have on that. Second page is drug control. Can't keep my glasses on my head. Drug control, about middle of the page right there, we amended sheriff and DEA vehicles. That's where that phone right there is only for those type funds. So I got the audited number for the fund balance beginning of the year. So now we really know how much money that bond has. And that's basically what we've been spending that money on is troll vehicles and that type thing. So that's what that is about. It's just a one pager in the last page. The only thing I'm going to cover is on page one, right in the middle, because this is another item. The mayor's going to cover in just a minute, but right in the middle, we had seller property. And I added twenty-eight thousand five hundred right there where we had some sales of of property also. So but the mayor will cover and a couple of items here, he'll cover the rest of that. So that's the three items right there. Real quick on that, I need to get sent to county commission meeting two weeks.
Any question, Mr. Hall? We'll open the floor for motion to send this on the regular session, motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Spicer. Any other questions or any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Next item is copier bids for registered deeds and general sessions, Mr. Hall.
Yeah, we had, we set out some copier bids. We got two bids back, one from RJ Young and copy star dealer, dealer from right here in Dixon, Dixon office supply. And RJ Young came back the cheapest at a hundred and fifty dollars. And I'm trying to find it a hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-eight cents, I think it was. So make a recommendation that RJ Young get the get the bid for the copiers.
Motion by Commissioner.
Register of deeds and due or general sessions.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Dawson, I think I had a motion, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions, discussion, Mr. Hall? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Item number five is highway budget amendment. Want to talk to you about that. Mr. Jackie Hodges, he's, y'all all know him. He's doing a great job. One of the things that he and I have started working on since he took office last October is which I also worked Mr. Burgess on was trying to maximize our dollars to make sure we can pave more roads. After the budget was done and the audit came back, we had audited balances. His fund balance was approaching ninety-two, ninety-three percent. We have to keep a high fund balance that because it's such a small fund, but that's higher than we need to have. So Mr. Hodges had had a list that he's taught with several y'all on initially with the money he has left. Looking around the room, Mr. Grove and that little piece of street and burns that you mentioned me included on that. I think it's that Charlotte Street. That's on there, up there, my Commissioner Buckner, that's my long road out there in front. Merle Road, Boca Road. Is any other to make them happy? I'm trying to give them the big ones they talk about all the time. No. Commissioner Spicer, thank you for making eye contact with me. The list we've worked on, but including that is in your budget and numbers on the remaining you have right now this year. Right? Okay. Okay. Most of the reconstruction, a good portion that's done up there. So we were holding that back so the road wouldn't be torn up during construction. With all that being said, the first piece of money came back to highway, we received from FEMA three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars from the August twenty-one flood. That comes back, that was money expended. We were reimbursed by the federal government. So that money's come back and able to put into Mr. Hodges' budget. Looking at the percentages on that, along with that money, we can conveniently take out an extra million dollars out of his fund balance. So more roads can be paved. And what we would like to do is we've done in the past, we do additional roads is to have you work with Mr. Hodges and work and get a list together at each of your commission districts that are eligible. Sorry, Mr. Brett, all in South City of Dixon. But get a list or we can go over those. We're really past a tipping point last year or so, but we're in a position, we're really getting ahead of on some of these roads. But we need your input on that. You're out there and we have a lot of citizens here tonight. So if you live in unincorporated Dixon County, please let your state or your county commissioners know if there's a road that you think needs to be paved, but we've, we're really getting ahead of that. So what I'm asking to round this off an amendment to take out one point four million dollars out of highway department's fund balance and place it into road paving. Any questions, Commissioner Ledger?
Basically, my question would be. Is that just like on our main roads?
It's on any county road that we maintain.
Okay.
We're going to let Mr. Hodges obviously set up a priority list on that, but we want to work with y'all to get your input on what y'all think the biggest need is. But this includes, and I think it's not only regular roads, we've actually paid old forty-eight last year or the year before, and was it Maple Valley? We we paid a state aid road out of our own funds. We're actually, we're getting our money and doing better with it than the states allowing us to get our money on state aid roads. But our view is, and I think y'all's view has been in the past, we can't wait on the state. Our citizens deserve to have good roads regardless of the state sending us money or not. So that's what that that amendment we want to bring forward on that. And in the, if y'all do bring this forward to regular meeting, we will work, have that list. If y'all work with Mr. Hodges, have that list prepared so that can be voted on at the regular meeting in two weeks and one day. Any questions, discussion?
Got one question. What's it cost to pave a mile now, Jack?
If we use our bid with you back to do for them to do some extra pay the figures we come up with is about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a mile with you back paying it for us paving it, we can get in there right close to a hundred and fifteen. The the price last month, price of oil and everything is one of the grass.
I just asked that question so people give people idea what it does cost to pave a mile of road, whether the county does it or whether it's contracted out and it's everybody likes to have new roads, good roads, but they cost money. But I think what the mayor's doing here will help benefit us tremendously on that.
And I'll take that as a motion if that's okay. And then second by Commissioner McElwain. Any other questions for myself or Mr. Hodges? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to move this on the regular session. Motion by Commissioner Buckner, second by Commissioner Beatty. Have a proper motion second, but there's no other questions. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number five is access control service contracted at the Dixon County Justice Center. Whenever we've put that building in, we're are having a couple of servicing issues. We can sign a contract with them. Of course, if it's a one-year contract, it doesn't come to this body. But to get the best price on this is to do a two-year contract to have the service done on the elevators and alarms over there. Mr. Bear's in the back of operating the equipment and I don't know what the difference is on that. I don't have that in my notes. So maybe we'll hear from Mr. Bear because he's listening back there. I'll make it a text from us. Ah, there he is. He let stop here.
Feel free. We have to have a service contract. It's for tech support for that access control. We got issues with the doors over right now. They will not talk to us without it. And it's a two-year contract. Will give us tech support. We still have to have the people to work on it, but it does allow us to do the tech support. That's what it's for. Because the it's a proprietary system that was put in place. They won't allow us to talk to them. That's why we're in a holding pattern over right now.
Thank you. Any question, Mr. Bear? Open floor for motion. Motion by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Petty, second by Commissioner Spicer. There are no questions. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number seven just simply says Dixon County Justice Center. What we, what has transpired last week, we know we ran into some inclement weather. When we were reviewing some things with our attorney and C task, we noticed a little peculiar situation in there where the, now that we've separated the justice center, the courthouse portion from administration building, there's some ambiguity. And when we closed the courthouse, who makes that decision? Sheriff Eads does not want to make that decision since I've been making it for everybody on that. But with that will allow us, all this is going to do under TCA is allow the county mayor to have the authority to determine when county office buildings are closed and open. And that's just a more of a housekeeping issue. Open floor for any questions. Open floor for motion, motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Gray. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. I do want to point out, you know, because periodically it doesn't seem like it was it used to be, but when Dixon County offices are closed on a bad weather day, seventy percent of county government employees are still at work. Your ambulance service, your EMA, the sheriff's department, guards, highway, and probably missed another department. I apologize, another selected department. So again, we have a lot of folks that have to drive in this office, but if it's not work that can, they can be pushed off a day. We do that and I appreciate the understanding. I see Ms. Mine and my court clerks back there that they do that and they're very easy to work with and understanding. And so are our judges on that. So I do want to give them a some of thanks for that. Next time a business is Canterbury clearing. The Canterbury site is the fifty-four acre site in the industrial park. We have money budgeted to do this work, to have it cleared and to have it graded. But this, even though the money's budgeted, it requires getting bids and a contract done. The bids are being taken this week and they will be back before. So as usual, we will take the lowest and best on that. The trees had to be taken down before in March before long Indiana long ear bat season. So if you didn't know there's such a thing, we can't hurt their habitat. So after that, you have to wait till the fall of the year. So this is to take bids on that and open floor for motion. Which by Commissioner Buckers, Buckner, second by Commissioner Gray. Any questions or discussion?
I do, Mayor. Why are we clearing it for?
I'm sorry.
Why are we clearing it?
We have a grant that was approved and I guess it was probably before the new freshman class came in. What it was, we're clearing and grading. We have a grant from Tennessee Valley Authority from the state of Tennessee and city of Dixon and Dixon County, we're supplying the match on that to get that property graded and get it more of a sellable position. Thank you. Did I take a vote on that? I'm sorry. You have any other questions? Did we vote on that or is that ad from the fact? Okay. Have a proper motion second. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of it was stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Item number nine is volunteer fire department leases. It's just y'all may have seen on Facebook or whatever you get your news from that the first fire trucks that we bought for volunteer fire have been or delivered. They're being worked on right now and getting them ready to send out. I believe that it was not done in particular or the manufacturing selected. The first truck is Tennessee cities. The next is Sylvia Yellow Creek. The other four trucks are should be in by May. But what we agree with a thought on this and when we agreed to borrow the money and supply these to the volunteer fire departments that we retain ownership of it, but we lease them to the volunteer fire department. So because of our borrowing and some liability issues, we retain ownership. But they will have to have some things done like hold, give us lost pay on that property. We have, don't have the agreement signed yet. Mr. Reagan is meeting tomorrow with Mr. Ruff, our insurance agent. Rob Fisher wants to be there, but he's had a death in the family, but I'm going to be there to represent him and we're going to try to get you an agreement together that we're going to get approved by y'all and have the volunteer fire department so agree to, so we can get that property out to them and let them start using that as soon as possible. But while I'm asking not is, is to put this lease agreement on the regular session. Motion by Commissioner Brett, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Under other business, if there is no objection from the commission, what I'd like to do at this point in time is ask Ms. Carrie. I'm sorry, I was three names messed me up. But have Carrie come up and speak to y'all because obviously I know that many of y'all have been contacted about the humane society issue. I know many people are here to hear about that. So what we'd like to do is for hear from her tonight. Unfortunately, Sheriff Eads, who is managed with animal control. Unfortunately, Sheriff Eads, who is managed with animal control situation, he's in a conference out of town and can't be here tonight. But I don't want to lose this opportunity to, where the commission can hear from her and have, have this discussed. So y'all can have some knowledge on that when Sheriff Eads gets back and we can listen to him and have his presentation, any recommendations he might have. If that's okay with you, would you mind coming up? If you just come up to the podium and we'll turn that microphone on. If you, all I need on that, Carrie, if you state your name.
Carrie Perry.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I can, I'm here to answer whatever questions that you have for me. And just basically tell you kind of what we're. And I don't, you know, I don't know where we are as far as requesting funds to the county commission or to the county for the Humane Society. And in, some of you aren't going to know this, and some of you aren't going to remember this, some of you will. But back in twenty eighteen and nineteen, there was a movement by a lot of people in the community to shut down the, the existing animal control facility that it was out at the landfill that the city and the county shared. There was a push for humane treatment of the animals, so to speak. And we, that was all able to be worked through to allow the, the existing animal control officers to still collect the animals, but the animals would then be brought into the Humane Society in a, in a humane way. And then they would stay there for a five days hold like they would in the old animal facility. And then they would rotate into our system, which allowed them of the opportunity and the chance to get a home, to get the medical care that they needed, to get, to be socialized, to be whatever it took. It gave them a chance to, to get it, to, to be adopted, you know? And so when all of that took place, we didn't. You know, this was something that the Humane Society had never done before. The county had never done before. The city had never done before. So it was kind of a, you know, a learning experience for all of us. And it, it took a while, you know? Year twenty twenty was pretty crazy for us when, out at the Humane Society, learning how to deal with all these, these animals. And it was also a learning experience on us, learning how to track these animals and to, to understand where they're coming from and to, you know. The city and the county didn't keep good records. I get that, you know, it was animal control. You know, that it was just them. They had call logs, but we weren't able to use those call logs to tell how many animals came in. So we had no idea if it was fifty or if it was five hundred, you know, we just, we had no way of knowing. It was just kind of a trial and error thing for us. So we agreed to do that and came up with an amount of money, which was a guess, to be honest with you, because nobody knew. So we, it took us half of twenty nineteen, all of twenty, to kind of learn the ropes and to figure this out. And so since that time, of course, we had COVID is, as well during, you know, during that period of time. But for all of twenty-one and twenty-two, it allowed us to dive in really deep and figure out the numbers of where the animals are coming from, where, where exactly in the county, where exactly in, if it's in a city limit or if it's in burns, but not in the city limits, or if it's in Van Lier city limits or not. You know, it allowed us to dive into those numbers and learn and, and have that data. Statistically, it allowed us to grab a lot of data for, for whatever that's worth. So we do have a lot of data available now after, after two years, which is a good thing for everybody involved because it allows us to see just exactly how many animals come in to animal control. Whether we, you know, whether we like it or not, the number is the number. We have to deal with it. And we have to deal with it in a, in a little bit different way because of the sheer numbers of animals that come in through animal control. So it's probably one of the biggest things about county animal control that we've learned is that the animals that come into county, through the county versus the city, it, it's a little different. It's a different, if it's, it's a different. It's just, it's not the same. The condition of animals that intake of animals that come from the county that could be out roaming in the woods or whatever, you know, for an extended period of time, the condition of the animals is not like the same condition that comes from the city. Most of them require some sort of urgent care, medical care, something. They don't, it's not fluffy coming in off, you know, walking down the street typically. You know, all, they all obviously need to be spay neutered, most in the city as well. But most of them are not, or many of them are not socialized. They could be feral cats. Cats absolutely feral. You know, I mean, that's just get with a given pretty much, but they need socialization. They need training. We have to assess them to get to, to, to get what the needs are. You know, the, the estimated days. Well, in my business, we call it days on the market, but estimated days that you are there, that, that the animal is at the shelter, you know, can depend. And a healthy animal that's, you know, what we would call highly adoptable may be there a day or two. But some of these animals that are not socialized that we have to deal with, it could be aggressive or a varied other list of, of things could be there for two or three years. But we're still working on trying to get them to a point of adoption. You know, we don't give up on them. You know, return to owner is a historical, I mean, return to owner in the city limits is a number that's, it's easier for us to return animals in the city limits. I mean, obviously it's a smaller area. I mean, that's just kind of what it is. In the county, it's a little bit, it's a little bit more complicated and not many of them get. Well, I won't say not many, but the percentage that get returned to owner is not as substantial as it is in the city. And that's just what it is. And the other thing that we deal with in the county are these hoarding cases, which there's an average of a hoarding case probably once a year. And those things are time consuming. They're very expensive. The one that we did in Van Lier for the county in June, June was, I think, twenty-nine animals. Is that right, Chris? Twenty-nine animals? Twenty-nine animals? And it was a horrific situation. It, it, it was just a really sad situation, but it had to be done. So it took us a couple of months to catch all the animals, the twenty-nine animals, because they were totally feral. They were sick. They were puppies. They were, it was, it was, it was a horrible situation. But we, we were able to finally get all the animals captured and, and into the shelter and being socialized and medicated. They were all very sick. I think some of them died even. So, you know, the, the hoarding cases are something that we have to factor in that, that's going to, that we have to deal with because it's not cheap. You know, when we, this, this, this animal hoarding case specifically, our out-of-pocket expenses were fifteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. That's just for medical issues for those animals. It did not include any time for the employees that were out there with cages for, for two months, trying to catch some of these animals. It was a rough piece of property. I think it was all fenced, but it was all just, it was a, it was a, it was a tough situation. And I mean, you couldn't catch them. They didn't come to you. It wasn't an animal that was going to get anywhere near you without trying to tear you apart. So, you know, those things are another thing that we have to consider when we're, when we, when we think about what it's going to cost us to provide the service for the county and for the city. Now, like I said, the city, we have not had an hoarding case in the city. Could we? I suppose we could. But we have in the county, and so we know that we have to consider those things in order to come up with a, with a, with a number that will work. So getting into some specifics, and I don't know how specific you guys want me to get into. I mean, and, and I don't know if you'd rather ask me questions and I'll try to answer, but in twenty twenty-one, we had, twenty twenty-one, we had eleven hundred and ninety-four adoptions. That is a lot of adoptions. That's eleven hundred and ninety-four animals, dogs and cats, maybe a few other, the rare guinea pig or pot-billy pig or something, but not many of those. Eleven hundred and ninety-four animals. In twenty twenty-two, because we've been, we've, we have been at maximum capacity most of twenty twenty-two. Our, our adoptions were eleven hundred and twenty-three animals. The adoptions, the adoption rate or the, the, the rate, the percentage of animals that come from the, from county animal control versus our animals is thirty-five percent. That's for twenty twenty-one. For twenty twenty-two, it was thirty-eight percent. Our, our annual revenue, you know, if you take our annual revenue divided by the number of animals that we serve, it comes up with what we use as a cost per animal basis, which is the way you have to do it. We don't discriminate across the board as far as where animals come from. If it comes in from wherever it comes in, it's going to cost the same amount of money. It just is what it is, you know? It, and so we take the number of animals that we have for the year. If you take our annual, our revenue for twenty twenty-two was six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eleven cents. And you divide that by fourteen forty-nine, by the number of animals that we brought into our shelter. That gives us a, a cost of four hundred and seventy-five dollars. Now, are we stupid enough to think that the county is going to pay four hundred and seventy-five dollars for an animal through animal, you know, through an animal control animal through the shelter? No, we know, we know better than that. But it still is the cost of the animal. So if you take that four hundred and seventy-five dollars and you multiply that by the amount of animals that came in through county animal control, which was five fifty-seven, that's two hundred and sixty-four dollars, five hundred and seventy-five cents. I mean, five hundred, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. That is our cost to handle now that, the way that we do animal control. That is our cost of what it costs for us to take those animals in, vet them, spay neuter them, socialize them, whatever it takes, train them. Some, and it's an average because some animals, like I said, you know, Fluffy, the poodle comes in, he might be gone in two days. You know, there's the rottweiler that's trying to eat your leg off, you know, he might be there for three years. You know, we, we only, there, we don't euthanize with the exception of for medical condition. If the dog is, if the dog is sick and, and is, is obviously, you know, not going to be something that we can rehabilitate. We're going to euthanize that animal and we have to. We don't like it, but we do. I mean, that's just the facts of it, how it works or aggression. We, aggression is something, you know, I mean, we can't put our employees and board and volunteers and people in a, in a, in a lib, liability situation as far as having aggressive dogs. Now, we have a trainer on our board of directors who assesses all animals that are, that are aggressive. And then we let her do her magic. And if, if it can work, it can work. And if it can't, then we have to put the animal down because we're not willing to have, to, to, to put anybody in a, in a situation where we could be liable for that. But so going back to these numbers, if you take with the thirty, if you take the two hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and, and, and that's what it costs us. Like I said, we know that the county is never or not going to write that up for the Humane Society. I mean, we get that. Our supporters love us. Our supporters love this situation and are willing to subsidize the cost of the animals because we're the Humane Society and because they appreciate what we can do for animal control animals for the county without euthanizing, without being a kill shelter. And, and obviously with eleven hundred and twenty-three adoptions in twenty twenty-two, we, we pretty much know how to do the job and we do it pretty well. It's, nothing's perfect when it comes to, to this animal control business or animal business. It's, it's a tough business. And, you know, it's taken us a couple of years to figure it out, but we've been able to figure it out. It's, this is not a business that we intentionally got into. It's a business that we got into because our supporters wanted the city and the county not to euthanize the animals and to let the animals have better care. So we got into that kind of on the back end and here we are. So i- is it, is it, it's like I said, it's not something that we really wanted to get into. It's something that we found our way into through, through the city and the county and, and our supporters. So in trying to come up with a number that would be sustainable to us and equitable to us and equitable to our supporters. Because that's the big thing. We're a five oh one C three. We cannot afford to use our money. I mean, it, I mean, you guys are on the county commission. We're not that far different from each other. You guys have a fiduciary relationship to the taxpayers, me. And we have a fiduciary relationship to our supporters who donate money for us to, to open our doors. If it wasn't for them, our doors wouldn't be open. So we're taking basically seventy-five percent of the money that it costs us from the bucket over here, from our donut, from our donors. So if y'all are giving a hundred dollars to the Humane Society, seventy-five dollars of that is going to city county animal or to animal control. So what we're trying to do is to come up with a, with a equitable amount of money that will work for us and work for the county. I mean, obviously it's got to work for the county, but it has to work for us too. Because we cannot afford, this is not sustainable for us. I mean, this will put us out of business as far as, you know, having, having to continue to pay two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars a year minus the forty-five that comes from the county out of our pockets. So that's where we, and, and again, it's just a, a, a number that was picked because it was roughly half of what the cost, what our cost was. That's how that number came about. It's not a magic number that I said, you know, that we, somebody said, well, it's this times this equals a hundred and fifty. It's not. It's just a number that was taken based on our cost of, of, of every animal. Trying to see what else I can tell you.
Ms. Perry, I, I don't want to interrupt you and we want to hear more from you. No, you're fine. But I do, I know I've had several commissioners that may have some questions and it may clear up. They may carry you a direction that you may, they, they may not ready to do that. So what I'd like to do on this, if it's okay with you, let's go in orderly fashion. There's no need to address the chair on the question. You can address Ms. Perry directly, but use some order. Give everybody an opportunity to ask a few questions on that. And at that point in time, who would like to ask some questions, please go ahead.
Hey, Carrie, thank you for coming. And I know it's hard to get up here and speak in front of all of us.
That's not my.
And I think a lot of us have got questions and I don't want you to feel like you're in a firing squad.
I know.
But we feel like we've been in a firing squad for the last three, four days, so maybe.
And I'm sorry for that. I really am.
I get it, because we don't understand how we got to this point. Contrary to popular beliefs by a lot of your followers, we don't have a clue how we got to this point. So I want you to understand tonight and explain to us how we got here. Who pulled the contract? What was the contract about? And we're, how we got to this point tonight?
Okay. So what happened back, starting in June of last year, the mayor and Chris Bush, one of our board members and the sheriff, I met with the mayor one time at my office. And then we met Chris, another board of director, and I met twice. And we, we brought numbers. And at that point, you know, I mean, it's, it's a year, not a year ago, but it was in June or July of twenty twenty-two. And so we, we, we're still on a fat gathering mission at the Humane Society for Animal Control. So we had six months of data for twenty-two, the last six months of twenty twenty-one, and we had the first six months of twenty twenty-two data. And so we, we gave that data to, to the mayor and to the sheriff. And we just, we just never could, we just never could come to some sort of common agreement. And so in October, I sent an email just stating that if, if, that, it, it was pretty much an email of desperation, I think. Or at least I felt like it was that we were at a point where we were that, that we had to have, we had to figure something out. You know, I mean, I, I, again, I'm a. You know, I mean, I, 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 again, I'm a fiduciary to the people who donate to the Humane Society. And I, and I can't just knowingly spend money that's donated to the Humane Society in a, in a fashion that's not, uh, in their best interest. So, you know, so anyway, I sent, I, I had sent the mayor an email just stating that, uh, this is where we were and that I, I just reminded him in an, in a respectful way. Because I, you know, I mean, we all, when somebody says, if you don't do what I'm telling you, I'm gonna do this, you know? And, and that's not how I wanted to come off because it's not how it is. But the thing is, we, we have to do something. We had to do something. So, um, I, in that email, I said respectfully, if we can't get this worked out in thirty days, we will be forced or we will have to give our sixty-day notice. And, and that was just the truth. I mean, it wasn't, it, it wasn't anybody trying to do anything. So if we didn't, if we weren't able to, to work it out, and so it, we, it wasn't able to be worked out. Um, well, actually I didn't ever hear anything. Um, I did talk to the sheriff a couple of times. Um, but there was no forward movement. So come November nineteenth, I was left with no option but to, or the board was left with no option other than to issue a sixty-day notice. Because we could not go through another year spending the money that we were spending without some sort of help. So, um, I issued the notice and, and, and I didn't, you know, like I said, I talked to the, um, sheriff a couple of times, you know, but really nothing, there was, nothing really came out of it. And so, um, come January nineteenth, we, January nineteenth, we received a final check from the county. And, and really that's all I know. Um, I, I will say this, you know, I mean, I gave a, when we gave the sixty-day notice, I gave a thirty-day notice prior to the sixty-day notice just to cover what the tracks that I need, you know, just, just to make a final attempt. So, you know, I mean, I'm not here to say anything about anything. I'm here and I'm happy to be having this conversation with the county commission because whatever pain that you guys went through over the last several days and us too, it's worth it to me and to the board of directors of the Humane Society to be standing here having this conversation openly with you. That's what's important to me, you know? I don't care how we get there.
Having a county commission meeting, we're showing courtesy about allowing someone to speak tonight. So again, I appreciate your enthusiasm and passion, but it doesn't happen here. It can happen outside. I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. Sorry. So, you know, we're just, I'm just happy for the ability to be able to talk to you a little bit tonight in this forum, and I appreciate that more than you all know. Um, and, you know, we, this is something that the Humane Society wants to work out with the county. But we, we all have to have some sort of conversation and some, to be able to make this work. And that's, that's why I'm here, you know, that's why we're, that's why the board of directors is here tonight to show that we in good faith want to make this relationship with the county work. You know, it's not, uh, like I said, helping these animals that come in through animal control. It is important to the community. People don't want to see us, the county, the city, whoever, us euthanizing animals for space. I mean, it's just, it's twenty twenty-two. We don't have to do that anymore. We can, we can offer humane solutions to issues like that.
Please ask more questions.
That you collected from the county and the cities? Was that a total or is that just what you adopted out?
The, the eleven hundred and ninety-four was the number of animals that we adopted out in two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, how many did you, in total, did you bring into the facility?
The, um.
You didn't, you didn't, everyone you picked up, did you adopt them all out?
Well, no, but there was animal intake of fifteen hundred and twenty-four animals for two thousand and twenty-one.
Fifteen hun-
Fifteen hundred and twenty-four. Yes.
Okay. And my next question is, how far in, in the hole are you right now? Sorry. I mean, what kind of deficits you running right now? So as the business, are you in the hole or?
No.
You're not, and you still got money and you got.
We are very, this, like you guys, and, and, you know, thanks to the, to the county mayor who is, you know, done a good job fiscally for the, for our, for our town, for our county, you know? We are, we are like you in many ways, like I said, in that we try to be fiscally responsible. We try to make the right idea, make the right decisions based on that because, you know, this has nothing to do with me or us. It has to do with what we do. And it has to do with doing the right thing for our supporters and for the animals, and that's it. So yes, we, we're, we are not, we are not destitute.
Well, what I meant was, see, when you got a budget and you, you always spend your budget, you're in a hole. I mean, are you in a hole?
No.
I mean, you're not in a hole. Do you know what kind of a?
Well, we will be in the hole continuing to pay two hundred and, two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars a year without some additional income coming from the county, which is why we're here.
You know when you're gonna reach that point? I mean, what part of the year? First part, second quarter?
I mean.
Have any idea?
You know, maybe in the next year.
In the next year, okay. But then how much are y'all asking, actually asking for the right?
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So you, you want a hundred thousand extra?
I want a hundred and five extra.
Okay. Can you tell me why that you want that much if you're not running such a deficit?
Because, yeah, um, because we, we will be if we don't get there. I mean, if we don't get additional funding, um.
And I'm just asking, see, there's people, there's people in the, in districts when they call and they ask you cotton, what are you doing? I mean, you know, so I gotta go back and tell them, you know, so.
I, you can ask me anything. I'm happy to try to answer it. I won't say that I can, but I'll do my best. Um, because the difference, the, the, the reason is, is that it costs us two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars a year to provide that service for, for you guys, for the county, for, for Dixon County. We're only getting forty-five thousand dollars. There's a wide discrepancy between that.
Say you're doing it now, but you, but you're gonna run out of money. When, and this sometime this year, so you gotta have a hundred thousand extra. I mean, why do you have to have a hundred thousand extra if you still, if you're not running out of money?
It's not our, it's not, because they're your dogs that come, they're Dixon County animals. We've been hired to do a job. We didn't get the data in the beginning of how many animals would be coming in. Who would have ever thought you'd collect that many animals in the county of, in, in Dixon County?
Well, you know what? I've learned something tonight. I didn't know what she's just keeping them up to three years. I mean, that's gonna, and as time goes on, the go, the number's gonna get greater. Your facility's gonna have to be bigger.
Well, we don't have many of those, you know, we don't have, there are some, but we don't have many.
So you think you're gonna stay around fifteen hundred a year?
We hope. Yeah. I mean, I don't, I don't know how it can grow much more.
Yeah.
You know, we, we, but that's what we hope. We hope that, I mean, with, it would not be that much with some types of animal control license, you know, legislation. Of course, we're not here to discuss animal control legislation. We're here to discuss, you know, what this is. But, you know, if there were spay neuter laws, guess what? The animal, these numbers would probably be half of what they are, which would be wonderful, but that's not where we're at. So, um, you know, that's why we were, that's why we had to give our notice. The, the thing about the Humane Society is that we are able to raise a lot of money due to our su- supporters. But it's not fair for set, if, like I said, if you gave a hundred dollars and I'm spending seventy-five dollars of your hundred dollars to, to, to take care of the, um, now, if you're a good supporter of the Humane Society and I'm spending thirty-two dollars and fifty cents of that or whatever, then you, then, then our, our supporters agree with that. And we'll go, we don't mind doing it because we're helping the animals.
Well, we support of yours and we also, you know, we've come down and got feral cats and this and whatever, you know, so.
And, and, and we appreciate that more than you know. That's what it takes to make it work, is for people to be proactive and get involved and adopt and donate and that kind of thing. We, we are not trying to be unrealistic. I'm not here telling you I need two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, which is the cost. I'm telling you, I'm here needing a hundred, that we need a hundred and fifty in order to make it equitable and sustainable for us. And hopefully, cu- with a number that can work for you guys.
Well, your total budget was six hundred and eighty-seven thousand?
Yes.
And that's what you receive from all your people that donated, whatever. Does that include the county and the city and all? And your numbers? That's a lot of money, isn't it?
Commissioner Beatty, you had a question, believe.
Ms. Perry, I, I wrote down some questions and, and I'll have more when I leave here tonight. So I hope I can call and, and ask some more.
Anytime.
Uh, ju- just a, a few and going back to Cotton's questions, the, the donations. And I hear you say, you know, I don't wanna ask my donors, a- and, and I'm outside looking in. If I'm, if I'm a donor, I'm thinking, I guess, where else do you, if you, where else do you get dogs? If you don't use, I would be thinking that's what I'm donating for is to take care of the county dogs and the city dog. I, I guess my question to you saying your donors, what, what else, what else is there? If there's, I mean, who else brings in dogs? Do we have, are y'all taking from any other counties? Do we get from, you know, I, I, that, that's kind of my question. What? Kind of talking about, hey, I, I hate to ask my donors to give to this. I guess if I'm a donor, I'm thinking that's what I'm giving for.
The animal control, um, numbers are just a small portion of the animals that we intake. So.
Where, where else do you get? I mean, just people bringing them in or just?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Somebody has a litter of puppies or whatever that they can't, you know, deal with. If we, if, guess where they come? If somebody dies and their dog, they, nobody wants to take the dog. It comes to the Humane Society. There's, there's so many reasons why, you know, so the, the majority of our animals are a, a, a large percentage of our animals and, um, you know, co- don't come through animal control.
Right.
The numbers that, that, that I'm talking about are specifically through animal control that come from the animal control officer for the county and is, is brought in through animal control and is kept in the animal controls part of our shelter for so many days until we have space, then those animals cycle into our system to get ready to be adoptable.
And, and I'm kind of like Mr. Rose, uh, like I said, I'm kind of blindsided by this. Knew about this Friday afternoon, I guess, when my wife gave me a going over for not voting for this. And like I said, and, and my little girl, when I left tonight, pointed at me and said, get this worked out. A- and, you know, and I said, a- and, and I'm here to work it out and, and, and I think we all are. But I think we're somewhere between the forty-five and the hundred and fifty. I, it, it's gotta be somewhere that we can meet in the middle on this thing and, and work. I, I guess my, my, some of my questions is also, I talked to the sheriff this afternoon, just a quick conversation. He couldn't talk much. But he was just saying, like the last two months, haven't been able to take anything. A- and I guess if, if I'm a paying, if we're paying it, I mean, he said couldn't break, take nothing but vicious animals. So if the county hasn't been able to take anything for two months, maybe we should have a
I'm not a pair of.
A plan, you know, to, hey, we need to do, if we, if they get full, do we take something? But, you know, a- and I may have misunderstood, but I, I thought he told me he hasn't been able to take anything but vicious dogs to their, the last two months because they've been full.
No.
A- and that's.
We don't have the ability to turn down animal control dogs. We agreed in our MOU, in our member of understanding with the city of Dixon and Dixon County that to accept animal control animals. So, I mean, believe me, there have been times when the shelter manager has called me saying, we don't have any animal control animals. And I said, make it. Because we, we agreed to do that and, and, and that's what we've done. Now, as far as, uh, we have taken three animals from animal control uh, in, in this, in December for, from county. And that was on, it was after the nineteenth, I believe, and I don't wanna misspeak, believe me. Um, but anyway, we've only taken three animals, but, but it's because the time, you know, it was after our agreement expired. But we.
And that may have been what he meant.
Right. We took three animals after the agreement expired with the, with the county, just because they didn't have anywhere to take them. So we took them.
A- and my other question, and I'll, I'll be done. Oh, this two hundred and sixty-four thousand, like I said, we're gonna have to have some number. Can we get a breakdown? Can I get of, hey, this is the two hundred and sixty-four thousand per dog?
Yes.
This is what we're doing to them. This is this, this, and just so we can just see.
Um, I have a spreadsheet that I will make available to each one of you. Um, we've have spent a lot of time going through these numbers to make sure that they're right. Um, so I will, I will, tomorrow I can email everybody this if you'd like, and then you can have it. I, I'm certainly available to.
If you would, email addresses are available on that, but if you can, get them off, you'll contact my office, we'll get them for you.
Okay. All right. I'll, tomorrow I will make sure that this is emailed to, to everybody. Um.
Hey, hey, Carrie, out of that two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, are you printing the money back in for the adoption fees and taking that out of that? Is that what left after the adoption fees and all y'all's fees? When some, like, I, I went adopting my daughter a dog and it wasn't, it wasn't free. It was pretty expensive, you know, it was pretty high, but she, I mean, the dog, she loves the dog, I think it's worth, uh, unlimited amount of money it would cost me. So is that money to, is that two seventy-four? Is that just a straight number per dog? Or are you taking the fees back out that you're receiving for your adopted fees?
That is, that is, if you take our revenue by our total amount of animals, which is fourteen hundred and forty-nine for two thousand and twenty-two, you divide that, it's just the, 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 the number, it's where we can come up with a cost per animal number as an average. Because like I said, some costs less, some costs more.
I think what you're saying, what you're telling us is the expense of the revenue that she has that offsets that, the adoption fees are part of that, plus the donations cover that expense.
Is that what you're asking, Rusty? No, I, I know what you're asking.
What I'd like to, again, I don't mean to cut y'all, any of y'all, uh, let's give any other commission opportunity to ask question. If any of you'd like to, and I don't mind coming back to you, Commissioner Grove, I apologize for interrupting you. But I do wanna give anybody an opportunity to ask a question because, uh, we got a lot of folks here. I'm, my bedtime's about ten o'clock, so I'm in real good shape right now. Uh, so we can stay as long as y'all like. But does anybody else have a question? Let me ask that first before I move back. Commissioner Brett.
My initial thought when I was looking at this, um, in two thousand and twenty-two, if you, if you took the number of animals that come in from the city side and you took sixty thousand, divided it, come up to a hundred and forty-three dollars and some change per animal. Uh, if you took the hundred and fifty thousand and divided it by the number of county animal control, it would be about two hundred and sixty-nine dollars per animal. If you took a two, and, and if you took the, the hundred and forty-three dollars of the city animal would cost, which, from what I understand, the C two thousand from the city was acceptable. Uh, that would put the counties at about seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. So, you know, we're paying more for the county. A- and I, I know what you, you've already said it and if you did a two-year average, you, because these average, these numbers are gonna change over time. I mean, we took, you took in thirties, you took in less animals in two thousand and twenty-two, you do that, you know, these trends continue. Uh, you know, they're gonna change. Two years is not enough time to know how it's gonna always be. But if you took an average of the two, the, uh, the, the county would be more like eighty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-five to match what the city's paying per animal. the the county would be more like eighty four thousand, three hundred and eighty five to match what the city's paying per animal. Uh, and I know you said it it costs more for county. And I had some people ask me, you know, is it sixty or seventy thousand dollars more? I don't know. That's because you're asking us to pay basically, somewhere between sixty and seventy thousand dollars more per animal than the city is. And some people had a hard time swallowing that.
Right.
And I and I know you said it costs more. I don't know if we really know exactly how much more.
No, that's not a, that.
So, but you did address that, and I appreciate, I appreciate that. The only other question I had, if I read right, you took in thirty six less animals in two thousand and twenty two than you did two thousand and twenty one. But your expenses went up a hundred and forty three thousand, eight hundred and fifty one dollars.
Right.
Wow.
Well, everything went up in two thousand and twenty two. I mean, look at what happened in our economy. You know, everything went up.
That's just a, based on your budget, a hundred and forty three thousand from your total, but that's a huge increase.
Yeah.
And you took in less animals.
Well, we didn't take in less animals from animal control. I, we took in less animals in total.
You took in, yes.
Our animal.
But but that affects your whole budget, not just animal control.
No, it does. It does, but we have to, you know, we have to look at it. Um, I was gonna tell you something too. Oh, regarding the city, going back to your first question in that, when 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 that, when our agreement with the city was worked out last year, we didn't have all, we had six months of two thousand and twenty two. You know, we didn't have the complete data that we have now. When I was, when I was talking to the mayor in, when we originally first started talking, I didn't have the data for the full year of two thousand and twenty two. We had half of twenty one and half of twenty two, which gave us a, you know, a mixed match kind of thing. But the the thing is this, is that we understand that the amount with, from, that we gave to the city is probably not a a as valid a number as we would like due to the final numbers for two thousand and twenty two, now that we have those. You know, this was, you know, this was January through June of last year. So, um, you know, the debt, we have additional data now to prove, and you're right, it's not enough. And and we plan to, uh, w- we plan to to discuss that too. So we're not, we're not here to try to take more money from the county than we are from the city. We're here trying to make it equitable and sustainable for us, period. Whatever that is. And yes, the county dogs, cats do cost a little more money, you know, and so there is gonna be a difference every time, every year, every month, every day. It just is what it is. A big part of what you're talking about in that differential is hoarding, because a hoarding case costs fifty thousand dollars. So if we didn't do any hoarding cases, you know, we're at a hundred thousand dollars, but we have to make sure that there's money because they seem to occur every year. So we have to account for it. I mean, it's just good business, just like you would. If you thought something might happen, you have to be, you have to plan to make sure that if it does happen, that you can pay for it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll go back to Commissioner Grove unless anyone else has a question or comment. Commissioner Simpkins.
Just one comment and one, uh, what comment is, this falls under the sheriff's budget.
Absolutely.
And he's not here. And I always like when we have a debate like this, I like to hear both sides. Um, the other talk, uh, you was talking about the hoarding. Do you have help from outside organizations like, uh, do you ever ask for help? I guess it's a question from other organizations to come in to help you.
There are volunteers that help, but there's.
No, I'm talking about like, uh, PETA and places like that.
I mean, that, you know, getting somebody like that, Chris, can you pipe in on that? I mean, is, I mean, we've not ever been lucky having anybody like that help us.
You don't mind, you mind coming up here so everybody can hear you? There's folks at home that can't hear what you're saying.
So when it comes to other organizations come in, a lot of it depends on where they are and other rescues that may be taking place across the country. Um, and also how big of a case you have makes an impact on who's willing to come in as well. Um, so there's a lot of different situations that plays a fact. Occasionally, you can get another organization to come in. Now, we'll tell you one of the things that that we do try to do is once we have the those animals come in, we get them assessed medically, um, begin their care, um, go ahead and starting to get them back healthy. We try to get other organizations that we can send those animals to to help take some of the impact and the load off the shelter and the and the taxpayers.
Thank you, Chris. Any other question, me or the commissioner, if I go back, Commissioner Grove? Commissioner Grove, we'll let you finish it up.
Carrie, I think what we need to come up with is the resolution tonight, our solution, and I don't know, we're gonna have to get some, uh, guidance from the mayor and legal. Is there anything we can do tonight to temporarily re- reinstate this agreement so we can get our animal control back under? But I'm like Randy, Commissioner Simpkins. I believe the sheriff's working on a plan, so I believe we need a committee with the main society, the sheriff, and some commissioners, so we're informed. Um, so I I really probably gonna get traction from the mayor on this to say, hey, going forward, is there anything we can do right now to reinstate the agreement for the next few months with the deadline? So with a price or whatever it is, until we can get with the sheriff and maybe a committee, and if the sheriff comes up with a better plan, he presents it to us and y'all partner, that's the way we're gonna go, or long term, we're gonna go with y'all. I I don't think there's nothing we can do tonight. But is there something temporary we can do to make everybody good until we can figure this out?
I'm sure we can come up with some sort of, I mean, I'm not gonna sit here and say this, I'm, we could, they can do that for this because I'm not, I I'm not authorized to do that. I mean, I'm just the chairman of the board, which is, you know, they're they're they're, but yes, I mean, we can figure something out. You know, I I don't know, I'd have to talk to, you know, more people to figure out what is, what's workable and agreeable. I'm, I don't know. Do you have a number in mind? And then I can or I don't know.
I think the short answer for me on that to you carry into everyone else on the board is, I wanna make it clear, the sheriff is in charge of animal control. And we can talk about the nuances, and I'll be glad to do this off the record because sheriff is not here to speak tonight, but the sheriff's part of animal control. I'm here, as I would with any elected official, help them financially. That's my role. They're electing their own right and have their own constituency, just as each of y'all do. So with that being said, as soon as Sheriff Bledsoe, I'm sorry, Sheriff Eads is back in town, sorry, Sheriff Eads, if you're listening somewhere. I like you just as well as I do Sheriff Bledsoe, uh, but as soon as Sheriff Eads is back in town, and my understanding, that's probably Monday, Friday, okay? Well, I'll sit down and have a meeting with him, and we'll come up with a stopgap measure on that, and we'll be back to y'all. Uh, I will recoup, quote you a bunch of TCA, but there's some uh, inside the state law, there's things that we can do immediately to take care of emergency situations that we can handle without coming back to the commission, so we can get to answer that pretty quickly. But Sheriff Eads is the final say from standpoint of county government. Y'all can set up, uh, y'all the funding board, you can set policy, but he is also a director or TC on how to handle this under animal control. So, that being said, come Friday, I'm available, he'll be available. And I know it's your question, I can say it plainer. I'll do something about it Friday when the sheriff gets back, and if anything comes up in the meantime, we will work with Humane Society. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Appreciate you taking time to speak to us.
Appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody being here, uh, on this. Again, whenever subjects like this come up, I've had several y'all reach out to me, and most of you are nice, and I appreciate it. Uh, it it's okay, uh, because I don't get, I don't take things personal because you're passionate. I'm passionate about things I believe in. So those of you who reached out to me, which is over ninety percent of you, are very respectful and thank you. Because I know you're taking it serious. Uh, we take what we do seriously. And when it comes out, we're trying to take care of the greater good of this community, and part of that's taking care of the animals, this community. That's what we're committed to, and that's what we'll work on whenever Sheriff E just gets back in town on Friday. So, I'm about to have to hammer down my county commission. They're getting unruly now. Next time a business, uh, is there any other business from county commissioners? Here now, we have any announcements, Commissioner McElwain?
Having a fundraiser auction February the eleventh at Creek Wood Cafeteria. They got a meal, uh, steak, pork chops, five thirty to seven. Live auction starting at seven, silent auction also, giveaway prizes, music, just a fundraiser for Creek Wood FFA. Appreciate anybody that can attend.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other announcements? Commissioner Gray?
Um, yes, I just wanted to, uh, thank Kinder and Morgan. I had a conversation with Craig Hayes, who is, I think his title is project manager over the pipeline that's going on right now over by Highway ninety six and all that area over there. Um, had a discussion with him about the debris on the road and, um, he says that they are going to, um, increase the sweeping on the road and the washing of the road. And the residents' driveways are gonna try to sweep all that up, get all the clumps of the clay and the dirt and the debris off and spray down the mailboxes. So I just wanted to thank them for their time and also for, um, chief, uh, the chief inspector I spoke to on site, Weldon Torrey. Um, so if anybody has any problems after that, um, that they continue, please let me know.
Please, and, uh, please also feel free to reach out to Mr. Hodgins. We had that discussion. I went down there Sunday afternoon, like a mud, mud road. I didn't know it was asphalt anymore. It was that much, so. Putting in a pipeline during the winter is not probably the best time to do it, but they work on their schedule and unfortunately not ours. Any other announcements? Yes, Commissioner Bay?
I'm gonna be a a proud dad, I moment, I guess. Charlotte Middle is playing for the state championship in basketball.
All right.
Friday and Saturday, they're in the final four.
Where's that gonna be?
Murfreesboro.
Is it at the Murphy Center or?
I don't think it is. I think it's at a high school there close, but.
Please let us know.
I'll take a say, so we're play Friday, six thirty.
Be there. We'll let you get a bus and we'll ride down with you. We have one of our county, is there any other announcements? Cause we do have one important one. Commissioner Britt?
Uh, the Dix County Cougar baseball team, uh, February eleventh at five PM at High School have their, uh, banquet spaghetti supper and silent auction. So if anybody wants to go out and help support them.
What day was that again? Thank you.
It's.
You're back on February eleventh. Is that the other one?
Yeah, February eleventh.
Okay.
Sa- Saturday.
So like it's a big day to go out and get something to eat somewhere. Is there another announcement? Cause I have one. As we all know, in the county commission, one of the cardinal sins you can create is, is allow the chair to miss your birthday. Commissioner Spicer allowed that to happen. So the punishment for that is, and we have a great crowd here tonight, is you sing happy birthday to Commissioner Spicer. One, two, three, happy birthday.
To you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Please let, let, let that be to a warning to the other commissioners, this can't happen to you, so.
Don't miss mine. It's to the end of the month.
No, I I know the twenty second, as I recall. Um, we, that will be the day after our meeting. Good, so on a Wednesday. Look forward to it, it'll be a party. Um, any other announcements? I've got two others. The last one, the next last one is there'll be a judicial committee meeting at six PM prior to the Tuesday, February twenty second, two thousand and twenty three commission meeting in the Beaufortale Booty Reed Junior County Community Commission Chamber. I would like to make one other. Uh, I think most of you here know your commissioners, but, um, I'm sure they'll be glad here to have input and listen to you tonight. Uh, I know most of their bedtimes are later than mine, so I don't mind hanging out a few minutes. You know, Commissioner Simpkins from middle part of the county, Charlotte, that's the area he covers. Commissioner Ledger is in the southwest corner of the county. Uh, Commissioner McElwain owns the county. It's everything from Tennessee City to Cumberland Furnace. Uh, Commissioner Beatty is the ridge. Uh, Commissioner Dawson is North White Bluff. Commissioner Spicer is in the southeast corner of the county. Commissioner Buckner is in the center south of the county, part of city of Dixon. Commissioner Britt, he's all city of Dixon, throw and throw. So Commissioner Petty is northwest city of Dixon and out that area going toward the airport. Commissioner Williams is my commissioner. He's got old downtown Dixon all the way to White Bluff and all the way down the railroad track in Burns. Commissioner, um, Grove has the eleventh district, which is below Highway seventy in Dixon, all the way through Colesburg, down to Luther Road in that area. So whatever, I didn't say Commissioner Gray has, basically that South White Bluff out in that area. So if, kind of giving you a general idea of where they live, you you're welcome to talk with any county commissioner, obviously, but I did wanna kind of give you an idea who your commissioners are, cause uh, th- they're gonna run for election in four years, and they're, they'll be more receptive to hear what you have to say. So my last announcement will be, the next work session meeting will be on Monday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty three at seven PM in the Beaufortale Booty Reed Junior County Commission Chamber of the Dix County Administration Building Four Courts for our state Tennessee. Thank you.